Good afternoon. It is five o'clock on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. I'd like to call to order a meeting in the St. Croix County Board of Supervisors. And we will start with our invocation from our Tim Sackett. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to all of you, including the newest member. I've heard that there's only one new member on the board this time around. So if you're not familiar, we start each of these meetings with prayer. Three important dates came to my mind for the month of May. And of course, Mother's Day and Memorial Day are two of them. And the third one is not the fishing opener that I was thinking of. The third important day, probably a lesser-known holiday, Memorial Day for most people, would be May 15th. May 15th is the National Peace Officers Memorial Day, a day to remember and honor the fallen officers. It's common among all of us how much we grew up and we didn't like the police when we were young. I remember the days of underage drinking, et cetera, always looking around my shoulder to see if my parents or my friends' parents or the police or the park rangers were going to catch us. And of course, I was convinced that they just wanted to ruin our fun. And I did not want to see them when I was doing what I wasn't supposed to be doing. But now, as adults, I hope I speak for all of us, we have a greater appreciation for who they are and what they do. It's all about maturity. There's a scripture I'm reminded of from 1 Corinthians 13:11. And Paul says, "When I was a child, I talked like a child; I thought like a child; I reasoned like a child. And when I became a man, I put childish ways behind me." And what an important lesson for all of us to learn in our lives. And so now that we have a greater appreciation for peace officers, now as an adult, I'm reminded of the days when I was a chaplain and how often I became friends with many local and county, city, community police officers. Their responses when I was working at the truck stop, when I ministered there, was valuable to me. And my response to come and minister at the jail as a jail chaplain was valuable to them. And it's good to have a ministry to the ones in jail, and it's good to have a ministry to the officers as well. I was kind of hoping that Chaplain Larry would be here today, but he's off on a mission The reason why I believe it's good to have this ministry is that God Himself is willing that all should be offered His mercy and His hope, and that none should perish, as He spoke in John 3:16. Soon there will be a delegation from St. Croix County to Washington, D.C., where Deputy Katie's name will go on a wall to honor slain fallen officers in the line of duty. What a heavy burden that will be on that trip. When I pray, I just pray that nothing like that ever happens again to all of us here in this county and have to deal with the things that we've had to deal with, including the big trial that got all the news and things like that. So peace officers are just that. I'm familiar with a common practice among officers to have Matthew 5:9. Most of them are tattooed, or they carry a card or something that says, "Blessed are the peacemakers." Let's pray. God in heaven. Having laws within our society was your idea. You are the law giver when you handed your laws to Adam and Eve and all the way through the patriarchs and the prophets and into the hands of our Lord who came, full of truth, full of wisdom, full of peace. And as a Christian society, I pray that we would honor that and live that way. Lord, I want to pray for the delegation of people that will be traveling in honor of Katie soon to go and have her name memorialized. None of us would ever want her name to be on that wall, but it's good that it is. It's good to know that many people, including the Apostle Paul, said that he had childish ways of reasoning and thinking, and he grew to put childish ways behind him. And that's something that we want to live that way as well. So I pray for the important work being done here in this room today. The decisions, the discussions, and the outcomes, I pray, would bring us in St. Croix County a more reasonable and more peaceful existence. As we live and deal with our neighbors and our communities, I pray for those that are represented here in this room tonight. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready for roll call? Okay, ready for a public comment? I do have one public comment card for Steve Nielsen, former county board supervisor. Steve?
I think I could get this in three minutes if I spoke really fast, but I'm going to try and speak slowly so I'm better understood, and I hope you'll give me your forbearance. I live at 450 Carriage Lane in Woodland Heights, addition off of O'Neill Road. This development is in the township of Hudson, and our streets have always been plowed and maintained by the county highway department. I am here because myself and others in our development have had repeated property damage from county snowplows, and because after many attempts, I have no assurance that anything has been done to address this, not even a reason that makes sense. Before I continue, I would like to thank the one official who did address my concerns and did stop by to discuss my grievance. That is Township Chairman Tim Foster, and I thank you, Tim. I should also thank Chairman Bob Long and Vice Chair Bob Fiedler. Both have their personal cell phones, I think personal cell phones, listed on the county website, and they do usually answer them, and that is commendable, and I thank you for that. Homes in our development were mostly built between 2002 and 2010. At the entrance to our neighborhood, we have a center island with landscape stone and many perennial plants. For over 20 years, this center island has not been a problem for the snowplows. But this snow season, the snowplows twice went over our low-profile curb and raked out some of the landscape stones, which were then deposited with the snow on my lawn and in my driveway. When our streets were plowed on March 25th, the driver first veered to the left, went over the curb, and raked the rocks. Within a travel distance of only 25 feet, the driver was over the curb on the right, which is my property and my driveway. The driver stayed over the curb for a distance of about 40 feet and well beyond the end of that center island in the middle of the street. A section of my lawn was torn up, and two of my reflective poles were taken down. This happened in the middle of the afternoon with good visibility. I contacted the highway department to simply ask that my concern would be addressed. I had no intention of involving the highway commissioner, let alone all you people here. I got no reassurance. Instead, I got excuses that made no sense to me. The attitude of the commissioner is that the center island itself is the problem and that the damage will happen again. I have another issue with the highway department. Two years ago, I attempted to contact the highway department about the sanding material being spread on the snow-covered streets. The material contained stones up to one-half inch. The material ends up in our lawns. I still have the pictures I took of those stones. I never got an answer. Being that our neighborhood is an island in the city of Hudson, I am well aware of the performance of the city's plowing and sanding. There are no rocks or pebbles in their sanding material. Can the hobby department learn to do a better job from the city of Hudson? Across O'Neill Road from our neighborhood is Red Cedar Canyon Development. This development has at least four center islands in their streets that are identical to what is in our neighborhood. I frequently travel and walk those streets. I have never seen where a snowplow went over the curb on the right or the left. Again, can the county do a better job by learning from the city of Hudson? I want these issues addressed by the hobby department. To claim that the problem is the center island itself is insulting.
Thank you, Steve. Other public comment? Yes, young lady.
Hi, I'm Linda Klinger from Emerald, Wisconsin. I'm here asking for your help to clean up a very large mess in the town of Emerald, which is a creamery. I've worked with Heather for a couple of years now, and I'm not getting anywhere with cleaning up this project. I've talked with Bob Swanepoel to bring it to his committee. I've not heard anything. It's a public nuisance. It's falling down. I've got pictures of it. It's a hazard, and nobody wants to do anything. The county says the town has to take it back. The town says, no, the county has to take it back. I can't buy it from the man because he owes federal and back taxes. I said, give it to me. I will clean it up. But nobody will do that either. They're going to spend who knows how many hundreds of thousands on taxpayer money because somebody drove by and said it had asbestos in it, and there's hardly anything in there now. But I can't get anywhere, so I'm here to seek some help to get this resolved. So I don't know what my next step is. Where do I turn for help? I've got pictures to show you that it can't... Heather had said one time that, you know, if it got cleaned up by the county, we would have to put it up for auction. It's not worth anything. It's too close to the road. It's too close to three people's adjoining property to build on it. But there's a tree holding up the one big wall, and if it falls, it's going out on Highway G. So then who's going to be responsible when someone gets hurt? Because nobody will take claim. So I'm asking you guys, what's my next step? Where do I go to have the mess cleaned up? Anybody got any suggestions for me?
I don't think we can respond to your question, but we appreciate your comments.
So you mean I still am in limbo? Nobody wants to help?
I don't think that would be the case. It's just that this is a time for a public to comment on issues, but we're not able to respond. They're not on our agenda.
So my next step to get on the agenda and do more?
We'll have staff reach out to you. How about that?
Okay, I've had this for two years now. So I'm not going to go away. If I have to come every month, I'm going to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda? Supervisor Austinis? And that, I'm assuming, is a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Point of order. I cannot vote on two of the minutes that I was not present at, so I request that those get pulled out.
And I think that would be acceptable. That's okay.
All right.
But good point. Thank you. Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent agenda, and we're ready to vote. Thank you. That motion is approved unanimously. We're going to move on to our county administrator's report for a financial update. I thought your request was that you couldn't vote on those minutes, but I thought that was perfectly acceptable and wasn't a need to pull them out separately.
And that's fine. That's acceptable.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, financial report. Just one thing back on the last one. Make sure you take a look at the county administrator appointments to committees, councils, and boards. If you hadn't pulled those two pages, those are all the different committees everyone is appointed to. So I just want to make sure you didn't gloss over that particular detail. As far as the financial report is concerned, it's in the packet. It's through March, and where we are, you know, a quarter of the way through the year is still tracking where we should be budget-wise. I don't think I have any particular highlights out of it to point out for you, but if there were any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for our county administrator on the financial report? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our business items, the first being confirmation of county administrator's appointment of Elizabeth Claussen as public health administrator.
Get a motion.
Oh, okay. We need a motion to approve the appointment. Supervisor Leaf?
I moved the appointment of Ellie Claussen.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Supervisor Teladon. So the motion on the floor is to approve the appointment. Is there any discussion, or would you like to say something?
Yeah, well, I mean, we can grill Ellie if we like to. She's here this evening. But Ellie has worked for the county. She's been promoted into this position. She's done a wonderful job for us as an epidemiologist. We think she's going to do a wonderful job as our public health administrator. She is here if you do have any questions for her, though I'm sure she would love to answer questions or make a speech or something for you. But the appointment for the public health officer for a county requires confirmation by the county board.
Ellie, we'd actually love to hear from you if you'd like to at least say hello or if anyone has any questions for you. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I am.
Good evening. Thank you for the appointment. Yeah, I am looking forward to the position. I have been here in this space prior through COVID, and we have... We are looking forward to a productive and successful relationship in the future in regards to public health. There's a lot of important issues relating to public health here in the county that we are really looking forward to working on. And being an epidemiologist, what I will say is, my specialty is getting the data, so doing the evaluations and really looking at justifying why we're doing what we're doing and are we seeing results of what we're doing. So thank you again for having me and appointing me.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah, other questions? Just so you guys are aware, kind of the procedure that happened prior to this was not only the interview, but also because we are a Level III public health department, there are specific requirements of my position, and I must be approved by the state. So I also have approval by the state for the position. And so my resume is included if you have any further questions. So, thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the appointment. Let's vote. And that motion is approved unanimously. Congratulations, Ellie. Let's move on to the second business item, resolution accepting the donation of two vehicles from Aging and Handicap Transportation for use by St. Croix County Aging and Disability Resource Center. Do we have a motion for this resolution? Supervisor Adams? Do we have a second? Supervisor Van Summeren? Who would like to?
Take my agenda. You have a motion.
That's okay. The chair has priority.
Oh, you moved it.
I did.
Okay, well, the agenda item was reshuffled slightly after I printed my agenda, so I apologize for that. So, okay, so on the... Well, oh. Okay. Okay, well, we're going to change that. We're going to switch gears here to our resolutions supporting the 2024... Yes, sir?
Motion, a second on the floor, would you care?
Yes, we did.
And it is your prerogative to change the order of the agenda packet at any time, so...
Point well taken there. Since we have a motion and a second, we really should continue with that particular item.
Thank you.
Yes, very well. So I'm looking for someone with... Who would like to describe this particular item? This is the donation of the two vehicles?
No, it's not.
Yes.
Oh, that's the one he is at. Okay.
Well, someone would like to describe this?
I can help describe this. So this is a resolution accepting donations. The requirement is any donations over $10,000 have to be approved by the county board. And so these donations are two vehicles, which the county already uses for the Aging and Disability Resource Center. And this would be accepting the 2018 Dodge Caravan and the 2011 Goshen minibus to be utilized by the ADRC, and then they'll be titled in our name if we accept these donations.
Any discussion? Supervisor Amber?
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion? Yes, Supervisor Burning?
Okay, so since the motion wasn't really clear, I'd like to know what the motion is that we're voting on.
Motion was to accept the resolution, accepting the donation of the two vehicles. Any other discussion or comments? So we're ready to vote on the resolution, again, accepting the donation of the two And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we'll back up now to number two. The resolution supporting the 2024 Wisconsin DNR Recreational Trails Program Grant Application for Glen Hills County Park Lakeside Trail. We have a res, or a motion. Was that a, was that a motion to approve?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the...
Okay, Supervisor Anderson and second Supervisor Counter. Supervisor Anderson?
Yeah, so this is a resolution to approve applying for a grant for an 80/20 cost share for an eight to 10-foot wide grade five gravel trail to help simplify the maintenance of Glen Hills Park and also make a snowmobile crossing across Beaver Creek. The total cost would be a little over 305,000. Then 80/20 cost share of the county would be on the hook for 61,000, but that won't require a budget if the grant is approved, obviously. But it wouldn't require a budget amendment. The department will build it into their current operating budget that they already have.
Questions? Comments? Supervisor Burning?
I got to ask again because the motion wasn't clear. What is the exact motion that we're voting on?
Give me a chance. I'm trying to do a better job of repeating it. So the motion on the floor is to approve the resolution supporting the 2024 Wisconsin DNR Recreational Trails Program Grant Application for Glen Hills County Park Trails, Lakeside Trail. That is the motion on the floor. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, oh, Supervisor Counter, sorry.
Just wanted to reiterate that one of the discussion points at the meeting was, again, that on the 80/20 split, the 80 is what we would be going for the grant. 20% would be coming internally without coming back to the county board for additional funding. It would be done through internal from the community development.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, again, the, the motion on the floor is to approve the resolution. And that's approved unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our third item, resolution honoring Deputy Katie Leising. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Supervisor Fiedler.
I move to approve the resolution honoring Deputy Katie Leising.
Second.
And second by Supervisor Leaf. I believe our sheriff would like to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, as we roll into our, yesterday was the anniversary already, the one-year anniversary of Deputy Leising's death. One of the things we wanted to do was push forward this resolution, recognizing that sacrifice from her and kind of a recognition of law enforcement within the community and within the colony. But this really does focus in on Katie and, and who she was. We thought it was, normally we'd have done it earlier in the year, but this year has gone by so fast and so many things going on as part of this process. So we were hoping to get this through. One of the reasons, and towards the bottom, it talks about presenting this to the family. I would also include this and we'll be doing some posthumous honors and that this would be included with that, so... Thank you.
So you don't want to have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, the resolution, or the motion is to approve the resolution honoring Deputy Katie Leising. And we are ready to vote. And that motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. And we'll move on to, I believe, our last business item, if I'm looking at the order correctly. Amendment to Chapter 79 of the St. Croix County Code of Ordinances, All-Terrain Utility Vehicle, All-Terrain Utility Terrain Vehicle Route Ordinance. It's a mouthful. Do we have a motion? Supervisor Counter? Is that a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the amendment to Chapter 79 of the St. Croix County Court of Ordinances, All-Terrain Utility Terrain Vehicle Route Ordinance.
And do we have a second? Supervisor Van Summeren. Okay, would, I guess we're going to rely on our highway commissioner.
Good evening. Before you is an application from the Town of Emerald for County Trunk Highway D from 160th to the east to the 160th to the west, approximately half mile in length. This trail connection would allow for less diversion around. Right now, this provides an east-west corridor that is utilized most of the way across the county from the east side all the way to the south side of New Richmond. There are no accidents on this section that present a concern. We vetted it out. We also coordinated with the Sheriff's Department. I won't speak for the sheriff, but they passed along that they have no objections to this route as well. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Supervisor Hanson?
I'd ask Corp Counsel to look at that. If you're looking at the resolution, is that line 40? If, if it is, then it might be a typo. County Highway D, it says 150th Avenue to 160th Avenue, a distance of point, half-mile.
That is a typo.
That is a typo?
That is a typo.
I'd like to make a, an amendment that we change this from 160th Avenue to 160th Avenue, a distance of one-half mile. Point, .5 mile.
Did everybody hear that motion to amend?
No, I, I heard a motion to amend, but we did not, I did not hear the actual motion. If you could repeat that, please.
Right, I'd like to make a motion to amend that it say line 40, it would say parenthesis K, County Highway D, it would be abbreviated CTH, space, D, from 160th Avenue to 160th Avenue, comma, a distance of 0.5 miles.
Is that a correct correction, if I can say that?
That's an amendment to the motion, or to the res, or to the ordinance, excuse me. And Commissioner Creachy, that's what you explained. It's 160th to 160th, correct?
Yes, first of all, my apologies for missing the oversight in the packet, but that is 160th to 160th and it is a half-mile approximately.
And I think part of the issue is in the application from the clerk from the Town of Glenwood. It does say 150th Avenue to 160th Avenue, and that may have been what caused the initial confusion. But the clarification from you is it should say 160th to 160th.
Correct, and we have worked with the Town of Emerald on revising the application. The 150th and County Highway D intersection does have a significant amount of accidents. And we worked with them to revise their application to not include that intersection.
Commissioner, yeah, why don't you get a second?
We don't have a, or have a second for that amendment? Supervisor Teladon. So the discussion now is for the amendment to the resolution. Supervisor Anderson?
I must be missing something because I'm hearing 160th, 160th. And that sounds like you can, like, go kitty-corner across a county highway. Am I, is that, am I understanding, am I missing something?
It's 160th to 160th, but it is offset by a half-mile.
Oh, there's like, it's an offset intersection.
Correct. So 160th East is approximately a half-mile north of 160th West, which makes the western movement right in the Town of Emerald. So it's, it's an offset intersection.
Okay. Should we specify that? Just...
That is the way the roads are labeled too. So the street signing does say 160th and 160th, even though they do not line up, so...
Okay, so there's no east or west on the road sign?
No.
So it should, okay.
I enumerated just for clarification.
For my, for the head, yeah, I got you. Yeah, okay.
So on line 29, they have an east and a west as an example. Because that's a 170th, you want 70th, line 29 of the same ordinance? Maybe something like that would be helpful.
Okay, other questions? Okay, Supervisor Amber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, maybe I misheard, but is the motion for .05 miles or a half a mile? Thank you.
.5.
Can you?
One-half mile.
Can you clarify that, please?
Yes. What Supervisor Hanson indicated is 0.5 miles, so a half a mile. And that's what's indicated in the ordinance. So I think procedurally, we need to vote on the motion to amend that's on the floor right now. And then after that has been approved or not approved, then someone can make a clarifying motion to amend the east-west if that is preferable.
Okay, other comments or questions on the specific amendment that I will have Heather repeat? This is, the motion is for the amended, to amend the resolution. Heather?
Yes, so it's the motion to amend line 40. And the motion to, is to amend 150th to 160th. So we'll read County Highway D from 160th Avenue to 160th Avenue, a distance of 0.5 miles.
Okay, is that clear for everybody what we're voting on? The amendment? Okay, let's vote. Okay, that motion passes, so the resolution is amended per the motion. And I believe there might be an additional clarification needed? Would someone like to make? No.
I think it's up to you. Line 29 had a similar situation where we labeled then a west and an east. But it's entirely up to you whether you think it's necessary or not.
Supervisor Teladon?
But 170th isn't officially labeled that. It's still, it just says 170th on both of those on the street sign. So that's just in parentheses in here. I don't think we need to do anything.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is the motion to approve the resolution as amended. Is there any additional questions or comments? Supervisor Van Summeren?
Thank you, Chair. Doesn't that make us look like idiots? I think we ought to put east and west on there just to cover our side because it looks like we don't know where we're going, but we're going. And, and I think this would, I would, I would make a motion to amend that so we put east and west on the appropriate side. Thank you.
Okay, can we be specific on the amendment, please?
Yes, I believe what Supervisor Van Summeren is making a motion to amend line 40 to indicate County Highway D, comma, from 150th Avenue, 160th Avenue, my apologies, parentheses west to 160th Avenue, parentheses east, a distance of .5 miles.
So there was a motion to amend. Is there a second? Supervisor Anderson? Okay, the motion on the floor is to amend per what Heather just described. Is there any additional comments or questions? Okay, let's vote on the additional amendment. That motion is approved. And now we're back to the original resolution as amended. Any other further comments or questions? Otherwise, we're ready to vote.
Can I just clarify that that was Supervisor Counter that made the motion originally? And then Supervisor Van Summeren, if you could put your second in? I believe you were the second.
You didn't push the button.
Yeah. Okay, now we go. Now you can push the second.
Good, that amend, the resolution as amended is approved unanimously. Thank you. That concludes our business items. We're ready to move on to our annual department reports, starting off with our sheriff's office. Jail and Emergency Services Annual Department Report.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Normally, when we do our, our year-end report, it's normally January, February. Because we were in the middle of our move from our offices up to our temporary spot, that's why it kind of pushed us back a couple months. But 2023 had a lot of numbers, a lot of statistics. Obviously, we had an eventful 2023. Clearly with Katie's event that, that took up a lot of, a lot of the public attention, a lot of what was going on within the office. But I think, as you'll see through this annual report, that there was so much that went on, on a day-to-day basis. They continued to go on. And we had operations, we operated as best we could. We can say operated as usual, but it was a different usual for us, so... But there are a lot of things that, a lot of good work that was done by a lot of people in 2023. I don't have a whole lot of presentation just because there's so much of it. But I do want to kind of point out just some of, like on page two, the issues and concerns as we go down. The increased requests for open records and the required redaction of protected information. There is so much involved now in, in open records. That's going to be one of our, one of our concerns moving forward. Technology is wonderful in a number of areas. But it also logs down as much information as we have when open records come in. So that's one area that we're kind of trying to assess to see how to best manage it with the number of 911 calls, the number of body cams, the different views of body cams. When we say one incident, there could be five officers at an incident, and each one of those body cams needs to be redacted, packaged up. Now, in the end of '23, '24, we're adding dash cams, and that's going to add that much more to the open records request. So that is one of the areas that we'll be focusing on moving forward and trying to, trying to battle through, so... Any questions that I can drill down on?
Any questions or comments? Supervisor Burning?
I've been reading a lot on how text 911 is starting to be implemented throughout. There's a couple of counties, I think, that are implementing that. Do we have that currently? And are we looking at that at all? Hi, Terry.
You got them. Whether you wanted them, you got them.
Let's shoot for hugs today, Terry. What, what do you say to that?
Yes, July of 2015, we've been text-enabled the 911.
And is that, are we up to date with the new SMS, MMS, like all the new technologies that have been coming out over the last few years? Has that been able to keep up and...
Yes, the last year when we enhanced to Next Gen 911, we went to the next level of the texting part of it. And actually, in the last month, we've integrated for the alarm companies to start, instead of calling us by voice, sending us texts for the alarms. And confirmed that worked, and we've integrated that into our system.
Yeah, is that, I'm assuming that that helps all around, like just expediency of being able to get that, the message across in a way that if people can't speak or if they're in harm's way. So just, can you speak to that too?
So the text to 911 from the citizens, there's, on average, maybe nine to 10 per month that we receive. A lot of it, a good percentage of it is the people don't realize that it's working. It's, oops, I didn't realize it was working. So that has allowed us to navigate through that. There has been times where voice doesn't work on a cell phone, but the subject can text us from a car crash. We've had several incidents where that has happened. We also have a lot of suicidal subjects where there's a friend with them, and they don't want the friend to be aware that they're calling for help, that they'll communicate with us for that as well. So there's a lot of that that does happen throughout the year.
Supervisor Feedler?
Just a quick question for the Sheriff, just to kind of explain something a little bit further. On page ninety-eight of our agenda packet, it's transports. Sheriff, could you just review just a little bit what's involved with transports, particularly for emergency detentions and the contract services we use, and why that's beneficial to the county?
It's beneficial to the county for the transports. And you're specifically talking about when we contract out transports, correct? It's really a manpower. Utilizing a contracted service to do some of our transports keeps us on the street. And there are some transports that come from around the country that we not only don't have the staff and the manpower, but there's a cost associated with that as well. And there are some transports from across the country that prior to doing that on a warrant pickup, we also confer with the district attorney's office on is that juice worth the squeeze of what that warrant may have been for? For a thousands of dollar transport. But within the state, those transports, again, really keep us on the street. These transports will show up through the transport. Say, for instance, they have to bring somebody from court or to court, they'll also wait. And once court is done, they'll return them to where we, where they were picked up at, so. That's been very beneficial for us. Again, we're trying to utilize as much technology as we can to reduce some of the transports, but you can see our transports are still ticking up more than we thought.
Sheriff, I appreciate the policy that you've got to do that. Could you just share with us just a little bit more about the costs involved? And what you save and what the costs are when a transport occurs, let's say to Winnebago. Round numbers.
Are they so rough? It's recorded? Well, whatever the officers, well, there, there's a contracted rate per hour that these guys, that the, the company does. One of the drawbacks is they also have the drive time to pick up and to remove. And it's hard to come right out with a cost, just because it varies. We talk about what an officer makes, taking them off the street. Then there's the backfill of that officer that's off the street, either in overtime or extensions, that really doubles our cost when we're doing those transports. So whatever deputy makes in those contracted service does it just for that flat fee with no overtime.
Sheriff, just, just not to dwell on it too much, but I think the board might just find interesting the enormous amount of effort that's, that you're utilized by yourselves when you have an emergency detention. And could you just maybe take us through a typical one where a person, what, what is the circumstance? What might happen to a person if you think they're high on drugs, let's say? And what do, what does your office have to do? What kind of manpower do you have to apply to bring them to, let's say, the hospital? And then what's a typical weight? What are the problems you run into with Winnebago? And then if you were to do the transport, what would be the amazing number of stops you have to make and, and safety precautions you have to take? And then, of course, getting all the way back. You said it all generally, that I, and I think it's a very good policy that we've got to contract them out. But it is such a complicated issue. If you could just share over, but maybe a couple minutes with us, what it takes for your office when you get a call that results in an emergency detention?
When we originally get the call, and we'll start then at the beginning, when we arrive at a residence and assess the situation, we utilize either a phone service, Northwest Connections, to help us assess somebody in crisis. If at that time it's deemed from that, which they were up to an hour maybe at a residence, hour and a half, whatever it might be. For Winnebago, to accept anybody, they need to be medically cleared. Whether they've admitted to taking anything or not, they could be, no impairment, no observed, they still need to be medically cleared. We then transport that person, we take them into custody, transport them into the hospital. Then that's really where the slowdown starts. And as we've talked about in the past, that could be hours, four, five, six, seven hours, just to get them medically cleared. Part of that, I think, is a backlog from Winnebago having no room. So the longer they, it is my belief, the longer they stall, then they're able to open up a spot, which is why we don't get people in right away. They are very full down there as well. If, for example, somebody is impaired, Northwest Connections may not even assess them until they're sober or until they're at a certain blood alcohol level. There have been, and the hospital doesn't want them because, or doesn't want, they do not want them without an officer there. It could be a dangerous situation because there's a reason we were called in the first place. There was one municipality that was there for days. I think it was two days before that person could even be assessed to get the emergency detention, to then get them down to Winnebago. So I think one of the numbers we ran in the past was from the time we get to the door, to the time they get to Winnebago, could be thirteen hours. Well, the one shift is rarely the shift that completes that call, which brings on another shift. And sometimes, if the person is safe, that's where that contracted service comes in. Somebody that is not fighting, is seeking help. That's where that contracted service may come in, just to get the deputies back out on the street. But it's anywhere thirteen, eighteen, twenty hours, twenty-four hours. And as we've talked about, then within seventy-two hours of the time Northwest Connections says, yes, an emergency detention is authorized, which could be at the house. That starts that clock ticking within seventy-two hours. Through that process, the court process, they need to be seen or addressed by the court system. So we could, at times as happened, squad cars pass each other, one coming from, one going to. They could be four, five, six hours into it, either way, so. That has been taxing on our resources.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Leaf?
A really quick question about the behavioral health coresponders. And because that passed as part of the referendum to keep those positions, can you speak to how that's working with your departments?
I, I think that was instrumental, that those positions were kept and still at our service. The number of times they get called, we've, I mean, there's days you hear them going call to call. Last night, soon as one checked off, there was a Hudson officer calling, is there a B H unit on, behavioral health unit on? It, also that frees up officers when, in a safe situation, those behavioral health individuals can arrive, make contact, work through it, and really set up future services. If that person, we come up with a safety plan, they remain at the residence, keeps us out from transporting, removing that person from their home, taking them across the state.